One minute. Who? Unless there's something particular, no, you can sit there. Wherever you, because I know you want to write. So if you want to sit there, then sit there. So you can write. All right, you guys good? Ladies and gentlemen, I call the Davenport City Council Meeting for Wednesday, June 10th, 2020 to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence, a huge concern in all of our communities. Reference the death of Mr. Floyd and all the issues and concerns. So please take a moment, think about that, moment of silence. Thank you. I'll ask Alderman Condon to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Brian, would you please call the roll call?
Done.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis. Lee.
Here.
Grip.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman. Dickman.
Here.
Jobtun.
Here.
And Ambrose. A little try, is Lee on? I'm sorry, is McGinnis on? Right now we have nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. I did see that she was on early. We'll just have to deal with that. So protocol, everybody, you know, we're in a different environment. We're starting to come out. Appreciate everybody coming tonight. This is one of our better attended ones we've had in quite a long time. So thank you for coming, appreciate that. We're still in a partial electronic meeting mode. So as you heard and the people that are watching, a couple council folks, one's on vacation, but they're calling in, Matt Dorman and Ms. McGinnis and Ms. Dickman are calling in. So they're still on the electronic version. But as you see, we have contact with them. We know I'll, we'll do some pausing to give them the chance to weigh in when they want. So we're still in the COVID environment. Appreciate everybody in the audience following the signs out there and keep your distance a little bit. But as the governor opens up, we're glad to have you back. So particular protocols, glad to have you as we begin this meeting. Want to welcome everybody in attendance and everybody's watching our live streams. We'll respect you guys, you respect us. Please keep in mind you're sharing your thoughts with many people around Davenport and everywhere else. Happy that you're participating. We're really cool to see everybody coming back. So thank you for doing that. I'll ask you, if you can though, your cell phones, feel free to have them on, but I'd ask you to put them on silent so we don't get the rings all the time. I've done mine, so please help us with that. If you have a specific item on the agenda, when it's time, if it's in discussion, I'll kind of control that, come up, state your name, order, address. If you'd be kind enough to do it for people who are back new with us. The microphone, you don't see one like you see up here, right above the head of the podium is, it picks up everything right there. So just stand at the podium and talk normal and it'll, it'll pick up. And we've been doing this now for about 13 weeks. So thank you for coming. And we'll have a good meeting. All right. So moving along, will an Alderman move approval of the city council meetings for May, the minutes for May 27th? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And then tonight, Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator update, I know you have a few words of wisdom for us.
So as we talked last week, it started with a request from Alderman Dorman. And then I've had the opportunity to speak to many of you this week. And I know many of you have been reached out to by members of our community who are concerned about events and want to better understand some of the operations in our police department and how we approach things. So Chief Sikorski is going to give you an update this evening on some of the protocols we have and just a general update from the police department. The document that Brian's put up there, we will release publicly and share with our community tomorrow. So that'll be made available tomorrow via our website.
So I'll just say, Ms. Spiegel, thanks for putting this together. And Chief, thanks for taking the time to help us and the community understand. So it's your show.
Thank you, Corey. So first of all, my name is Paul Sikorski, I'm your police chief. Back on May 25th, a family was shocked with the death of George Floyd. Our nation was shocked. Our community was shocked and sickened by the events that we all saw. Your police department was shocked and sickened. I was, and I know all of you were, because I've talked with most of you personally about what we all witnessed back in May 25th and since then. We have challenges ahead of us and many of you and many of our community members have reached out with some consistent questions about, about what we do as a police department, how we train, what some of our policies are and things like that. Many of you have reached out to me to ask some of those questions. So we took the time to accumulate many of those questions, many of those concerns, the ones that were brought forward by many of you and many, many, many voices in our community that have reached out to me and to us as a police department as well. And we, I tried to put most of them in here, the common themes. So all of you have it. And the plan is to, you know, release that publicly through on our, on our website and also through social media with a link. So our community can have that as well. This is where we stand now as a police department. I think all of you know that have worked with me over the years that this police department is open. We're always looking to get better. I will never tell you that we are perfect because we're human beings and we do make mistakes from time, from time to time. But I think it's important that our, one, you all know, and our community understands what we have in place right now as they deal with many of the questions that all of you have asked me. So I'm going to go through a few of these things along with some other things that I think it's important that all of you know, and our community knows as well, about this professional police organization. First of all, and you know, we'll go, we'll have this posted up here so people can see it in the audience. I apologize, I didn't know how many people were going to come, so I only brought so many copies of this. But again, it will be out to our community tomorrow to share. The first thing I do want to make sure everybody understands is the, and it's not just here at Davenport Police Department, but in policing in general, how important recruiting and hiring is. Recruiting and hiring the right people, professionals to be police officers. That's critical. And we take, we take a stock in, in that. We have changed the process over the last five years considerably, trying to shorten up the testing process. But also a movement from us to have our police department reflect what our community looks like as well. So that's a piece that I wanted to include in here. Another part on this same front page is Kalia accreditation. Your police department is looked at by outside eyes and looked at through best practices in policing. And we have been accredited since 2003, which means we have been accredited seven different times over the last several years. And we continue to be accredited. And that review happens every three years. So there's every three years, there's outside eyes that are looking through our policies, interviewing officers that are working the street, detectives, as well as command staff to see if we're actually operating the way our policies say. That's important as well. In 2019, the FBI reached out to our nation's law enforcement entities with a use of force data collection program. It's a voluntary program. We are participating in that program, meaning we're giving monthly statistics on use of force to the FBI. So we as a nation can accumulate statistics and data on use of force. Next portion is a use of force reporting. So the Davenport Police Department, I think what's important to put things into perspective as well, that last year in 2019, the police department handled more than 107,000 calls for service in this city. From that, our use of force reporting indicates that we had some reportable use of force in less than a half a percent of those calls for service. So how often that happens is very minimal. But when it happens, you know, it's usually not a pleasant sight when, when, when force has to be used on one of our community members. We understand that. We have a mandatory reporting process for our officers from the empty hands use of force, so grabbing somebody's wrist or anything, all the way up to deadly force, many different types of uses of force that's reviewed in a, in a 10-step process that's indicated up on the, on the slide here for you. Use of force training. Officers are required to make decisions rapid, in a rapidly evolving situations. That's important to, to, to realize. Use of force continuum concept has been, has been floated out there recently as something that police departments need to consider. That's a, that's a policy that we had some 10 or 15 years ago. When I came on in 1988, we had a use of force, use of force continuum. We graduated past that into a constitutional model, a science-based use of force that, that really was, stems from the Graham versus Connor case back in 1989, I believe. And, and, and that's the type of system that we use currently for our officers and that we train our officers on. One of the questions came up to us was the, do you have a policy on shooting at vehicles? So we do have a policy, current policy in our use of force policy. And that is verbatim what our policy says. And basically, our officers are prohibited from shooting vehicles. However, in a deadly force situation, they can shoot at occupants of a vehicle. And that means, and I'll read this verbatim because I think it's important, that weapons may be fired at the driver or other occupants of a moving vehicle only when the officer has probable cause to believe that the subject poses an imminent danger of death or serious injury to the officer or others. And the use of deadly force, which that is, does not create a danger to the public that outweighs the likely benefit of its use. So it's a very restrictive portion in our policy. Duty to intervene is also one of those questions that have, that have come up because of what we saw in Minneapolis. We saw officers standing by. We do teach and we, we implemented a program that office, Davenport officers are trained and they're required to, if they view excessive force, that they have to intervene. Sorry. Another thing that came up is neck restraint, neck restraints or chokeholds, as, as some people have indicated to me during, during an email request, just wanting to know what our policy is on that. So in the state of Iowa, state law is, that considers all neck restraints as deadly force. So they can only be used in deadly force situations. We, we train that as well, and that's, and that's part of, of the training that we, when we have use of force training for our officers. So they're very, very fluent on, on that portion as well. So it's very rarely, in fact, I couldn't, can't think of any off the top of my head where those types of, especially not what you saw in the video. That is not, that is something I have never seen in, in almost 33 years of law enforcement of teaching that kind of, of restraint, if you will. Warnings. In accordance to our policy, verbal warnings, this is for, before an officer uses deadly force, okay? So an officer is making a decision whether to use deadly force. One of those things that have come up is, is you should require your officers to warn that they're going to use deadly force. Or some, that is in our, our policy, what it, what it states, states is verbal warnings. If feasible, and if to do so would not increase the danger to the officer or others, a verbal warning to submit to the authority of the officer shall be given prior to the use of deadly force. So they're required to do that unless that hinders my ability. Or here's an example for you. The, on, on Monday morning, a week, a little over a week ago, we had three officers that were ambushed in an alley. Their car was shot more than, or 13 times. There was several more rounds that were fired at the officers. I would not expect my officers, while they're getting fired upon, to verbally warn the people that are shooting at them to stop shooting before they engaged back to protect their lives. That's put it, just to put in a little, to, you know, putting in, into a little bit of perspective for you. We certainly want that to happen if it's possible, but sometimes it's just not possible. Body worn cameras. You all in this city instituted a body worn camera program back in 2018 is when we, when we first got our cameras. All of our operational folks, so that's patrol officers, nets officers, even our detectives that are going out into the field have body worn cameras. We have 150 or 155 cameras that we have issued to our officers. We have a policy on it on when, so when they have community contact, they're required to turn on their body worn cameras. So we do have a policy on that. And, and it's working very well. I think another interesting statistic is that on the, on the average, we, we upload around 489 videos a day related to police activities. That's a lot of contacts with our, with our community members. And I wanted to also, the officer training, the middle portion in blue, it gives you an idea of some of the training that we do. This, in the state of Iowa, Iowa, we're required to have 12 hours of training per year for, to, for a sworn peace officer. Davenport, last year, we had just in-service trainings, 48 hours of training. So we're far above what the requirement is from the state. Some of the things we train in, I listed a bunch of them there, but bias-based policing is one of them. Verbal defense and influence, that's our de-escalation training. Mental health resources. We have our outside resources, like family resources come in and talk about social work and they're what they can do to help us out. Force-on-force training, reality-based decision-making under stress. I just want to explain a little bit about that so you understand what it is. And if any of you want further explanation of these, or anybody in the community ever wants to know more about those, especially those, we actually record those because the officers can learn from each other and learn from themselves. How that goes is we actually cover the officers up so they can't see what's going on around them. We'll, we'll put a lot of distracting noise, sometimes loud music, sometimes we'll turn the lights off. And then we put role players in front of them, anywhere from somebody reaching into their back pocket for a wallet, up to a deadly force thing that is, that is presented to them. But we, we, we force them to think and make decisions under pressure situations. It's a stress inoculation type of, of activities that, that has, has really benefited our agency in training. Also independent investigation. So when there is a deadly force incident, it's my policy, it's our policy to have another agency investigate that. So we have the State Division of Criminal Investigation or the Scott County Sheriff's Department investigate those incidents. We had one, actually, where they're investigating two incidents from a little over a week ago during the, the incidents of, of the riots on that Monday morning. One was an officer-involved incident and another one is, is a homicide that they're helping us out with as well. Last page, and I know I was going to be brief, so I apologize for taking so much time. I wanted to give you just a little feel for that we're, we're not a stagnant police department. We want to get better. We're always trying to get better. A few of the things that we're trying, that we're trying to do better, and, and just as a big umbrella, I call it smart policing in the future. The community policing philosophy, it's really important to us and it's really important for us to engrain that in our entire police department, not just a small unit. We have a small unit that that's what they do. But we, we are ingraining that philosophy within our whole agency. We are also, when it comes to crime analysis, we're putting an emphasis on building a fully functional crime analysis program. That is with civilians, taking data that we're, that we get from calls for service and from reports, building, building models that we can give to our patrol officers and our investigators to try and prevent crime, to try and really focus on the people that we need to focus on. We, we have a collaboration with our family resources right now. And I hope the, the president and family resources doesn't mind me saying this because I don't know if her staff knows about this, but we're working with family resources right now of trying to co-locate social services within our police department that we can work with victims and witnesses and those kinds of things right at our police department. And, and some of the other preventative things that we've really been working hard on, as, as all of you have heard this concept of the juvenile assessment, juvenile assessment center model. We've collaborated with many resources within, within this community, as well as community members, trying to push forward this, let's invest money, people and time early on in kids and families. So the theory is we just, hopefully they never get to the criminal justice system. They never get to our juvenile justice system. That's the concept behind that. We're working with our school district with that and all of our social services on trying to get that pushed forward as well. And the last thing I'll share with you on that, on this smart policing, policing in the future is just sharing resources, sharing technology. All of you are aware of the NiBEN technology and we're sharing that not only quad citywide, but really regionally, we're sharing that tool combating violent crime and gun violence in, in our area as well. Two more things. Public safety partnership. Again, we talked earlier about the Kalia accreditation and having outside eyes looking at what we do and how we do it, our policies. We, we sought out, we applied for voluntarily, a, a partnership with the Department of Justice, focused on violent crime and focused on how we do business, police business in Davenport. And again, it's outside eyes, it's outside assessments, looking at what we do, how we do things and making adjustments, looking at best practices around the, around the country and us making adjustments. We're, we're focused on that. That's a three-year program. We're just going to start year two next month. So we have two years left of that. The other thing I will tell you related to that, when it deals with crime analysis, I told you that we're trying to get this fully functional crime analysis unit. We applied for a grant for two civilians to, for that. We should know about that maybe in September or so. And then lastly, I, I would hope, but I think there's probably some community members that don't realize that the state of Iowa, you can't have a quota system. I've heard that before, that, you know, you didn't get your quota tickets, that's why you're stopping me and giving me a ticket. We do not have a quota system in, in the, in the police department and here in Davenport. And the state of Iowa also says that you can't in the state of Iowa. That's, that's really the, the summary of what I provided. And again, I will have that out to our community. I will, I will just leave you with this. I guess I, I challenge all of you, including myself and the members of my police department, to look at the bigger picture of, of what's going on. And I think we've had some conversations at different community meetings and those kinds of things. Look at the bigger picture of this systemic racism, the, the systemic, the social barriers that are really out there, that have, that have developed over hundreds of years here in our country, that are right here in our community. And you as leaders, me as a leader, our, our team, our city team and our community leaders, we need to work with our community leaders to identify those barriers, not just in policy and procedure in the police department. Certainly that's important and we want to do that. We will do that, I commit to that to you. But we, we work in many different lanes, many different areas. You know, we, we have, while we, while the Davenport Community School District may not be in our control, I think we as a team certainly can have influence in that area. We can have influence on housing and fair housing in our areas. We can have influence on, on fair job and, and those kinds of, I mean, I think those are all things that no matter where you're at as a council member, whatever committee you're on, we have an opportunity to make change in those areas. But we need to listen to each other. We need to have open minds and we need to listen to our community and have them involved with that as well. So I, I thank you for your time.
Chief, thank you very much, Ms. Spiegel. Anything else? Okay, Chief, thank you very much. Probably there'll be some more comments, so as you always do, you stay here and listen and we'll be happy to do that also. Thank you for your time. Will an Alderman please move approval of the report of the committee, the hold for June 3rd? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. That passes. We have two appointments and two proclamations this evening. Two appointments are both to Park and Rec, Recreation Advisory Board. Leah Spratt is a reappointment and Tegan Trees is a reappointment. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Those appointments are approved. Two proclamations, one we have for Shoots in Park Day and Juneteenth, National Freedom Day. First one, Shoots in Park, Alderman Griffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. It is my, my honor to read this proclamation on the 150th anniversary of Shoots in Park, one of the gems of Davenport, one of my favorite places to take my children, a little bit of serenity in the middle of the city. The proclamation reads, whereas the city of Davenport is proud to celebrate the 150th anniversary of Shoots in Park. Whereas on June 12th, 1870, Shoots in Park was opened by the Schutzenverein or German Shooting Association in West Davenport and welcomed thousands of visitors on its opening day. And whereas Shoots in Park hosted many large and historic events such as Shoots in Fest, Sanger Fest and Turn Fest, utilizing the dance hall, music pavilion, zoo, bowling alleys, athletic field and picnic grounds located within the park. Whereas Shoots in Park is home to the 1911 Streetcar Pavilion, a locally recognized historic landmark and the only original structure remaining in the park. Whereas the park operates today as a 24-acre nature park and is maintained by the nonprofit Shoots in Park Guild and its group of volunteers. And whereas Shoots in Park remains as relevant today as it did 150 years ago by providing recreation and leisure opportunities for Davenport residents and Quad citizens, including nature hiking, or nature watching, hiking, picnicking and cultural events. Now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Matson and the Davenport City Council do hereby proclaim June 12th, 2020 as Shoots in Park Day and encourage all citizens to join us in recognizing Shoots in Park and the Shoots in Park Guild for their continued efforts in keeping the history of the park alive while maintaining a desirable destination for all to enjoy. Dated this 10th day of June, 2020. I move the proclamation.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? The proclamation is approved. I'll be presenting this proclamation to Corey Darnell, Shoots in Park Guild Board President, Michael Rivera, Board Member and Noreen Steenbach, Board Member.
City of Davenport, you really preserve our history and do great things for our city. And I really appreciate all of your effort and, and the same to both of you. I haven't met you before, but I know the good work that you're doing. And I do encourage everyone, if you've never been to Shoots in Park, figure out where it is and, and plan a couple hours to look around. So, and try to socially distance.
The Shoots in Park Guild appreciates the recognition of this milestone, sesquicentennial event. As stewards of this beautiful place we call Shoots in Park, we understand that we as humans need nature more than nature needs us. So we strive to preserve it as best we can. The Shoots in Park teaches us lessons from our past and about the life experiences of those who came before. The Chutes in Park teaches us lessons from our past and about the life experiences of those who came before us. The story of Chutes in Park is a rare tale of survival that also gives us hope that other places too can indeed be protected for future generations. We are pleased to continue to be a part of Davenport's history, heritage, and future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next proclamation will be conducted by Alderman Peacock for Juneteenth National Freedom Day. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is truly an honor and privilege to read this proclamation. But if I may, I'd like to read something first. "Juneteenth represents many freedoms and justice in the U.S. has always been delayed for people, for Black people, that, as I were, decades after the end of the war, we see a wave of lynching, imprisonment, and Jim Crow laws that take root. What followed was disproportionate impact of mass incarceration, discriminatory housing policies, and a lack of economic investment. And now, the national attention remains focused on acts of police violence and various racial profiling incidents. It is clear while progress has been made for Black America for 115 years of bondage, considerable barriers continue to be impeded of progress." I will now read the proclamation. "Whereas despite miserable conditions, inadequate space, and food, deadly disease, and the violence for crew members, millions of African captives survived the month-long journey across the Atlantic Ocean through the Middle Passage, demonstrating their strength and impeccable will on to face 200 years of slavery in this country. And whereas Juneteenth National Freedom Day commemorates 155th anniversary of the African-American emancipation, first proclaimed in Galveston, Texas by General Granger in 1865, more than two and one-half years after signing the Emancipation Proclamation by Abraham Lincoln. And whereas Americans of all colors, creeds, cultures, religions, and countries of origin share a common love and respect for freedom and determination to protect the right to freedom, understanding that until all are free, none are free. And whereas Juneteenth Independent Day, along with Fourth of July, completes the cycle of freedom for America independence. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2020, as Juneteenth National Freedom Day, dated the 10th day of June, 2020." I move the proclamation. It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign?
I'm sorry.
All opposed, same sign? It's been properly moved and seconded. I will present this proclamation to Athena Gibber.
First off, I just want to thank you so much for recognizing that Juneteenth is a very important holiday, especially amongst our nation's unrest right now. In 1865, the United States of America as a whole became free. General Order Number Three actually notified the enslaved, the fellow enslaved in Texas, that they were officially free men and women. The first celebration was known as Jubilee Day, and that was held one year later. It became, it began as a joyful occasion and also used to instruct the formerly enslaved on voting and their voting rights. Davenport has seen an array of celebrations throughout its history, but has never officially put Juneteenth on its city calendar. This proclamation today officially puts it on its calendar, and for that I am grateful. The celebration should be known to all and honored by all of our citizens regardless of race and color. Black history is American history, and to honor this day is a community forged together by such is the ultimate ode to liberty. This year, Davenport's Juneteenth celebration will be held in virtual format from 5:00 to 7:00 on June 19th. Please see the Friends of MLK to attend virtually. And again, I thank you very much."
Thank you, Athena. The door is keeping us awake, I guess. I don't know. Brian, you know. We'll pause a second, let the folks leave if they want. Good. Thank you. Okay, next item is petitions and communications from council members and the mayor. So any of my colleagues have anything they'd like to say? I'll go up top. Ms. McGinnis, Ms. Dickman, or Mr. Dorman?
I do. So thank you. This is Alderman McGinnis. This is my weekly census update. If you have not responded to the census, you may have gotten this postcard or will be getting this postcard in the mail. It is being sent to people who have not responded. And on the backside, it just explains very simply that you do need to respond, that you have not responded. Just to let you know, it is required by law. We don't have to vote, but we have to reply to the census. And keeping, if you don't want someone knocking on your door this summer, an numerator, the easiest way is to go online, my2020census.gov. It's very short. It's very easy to do. This postcard also has a phone number if you have any questions or if you want to talk to somebody locally, if you want to call me, 563-594-0628. I can talk to you about it as well. It's very easy to do. I do also want to let everybody know that the census is beginning for folks who have returned their census. They are beginning to call if they have questions. And I know that people are afraid sometimes when they get a phone call, they're not sure if it's a scam. The phone number is 844-809-7717. If you get a call from that number, that is from the U.S. Census. And they may have a question about some part of your self-response. They will call back several times. They'll attempt multiple calls if they don't hear back from you. Again, this will save you having to have someone come to your house. They will ask, when they call you, they'll leave a 12-digit ID number. You can call them back. They'll ask for that. But again, if you don't have that right at hand, they can still deal with you. But that's your, that is the U.S. Census calling. And we'll be getting a Facebook post out about this. And they might be calling about something like, if you have a college-age member of your family that was at college but then had to come home because of COVID, they'll be counted at their, you know, at their college. It may be a question like that. But this is just simply a follow-up. They're trying to make sure they're clear on what you sent them. And finally, Your Honor, I just want to let you know, I want to give a big shout-out. Samantha Torres, Brian Crupp, again, they're in the, working the chamber tonight, worked hard all week. Kurt Almeyer, they have boxed up over the last week about enough materials. It's thousands of items, and these are going out. We have about nine agencies and food pantries that are working with us to distribute materials for the census. So they've been working very hard this week, boxing all of that up. And they will be taking that out at the end of this week and early next week. So I really want to thank them. If you are an agency, if you are a food pantry that hasn't been contacted and you would like to have items to distribute, please get in touch with me. We will make that happen. The food pantries have been absolutely tremendous in responding and in saying, yep, we're willing to step up. And I want to thank them for that as well. So that's it for me, Your Honor. Thank you.
Alderman McGinnis, again, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your enthusiasm and efforts to try and get everybody to participate in the census because it's really important for budgets, et cetera. I will echo your calls for the people that live and work on the third floor, Brian, Jerry, Samantha, Tiffany, all of them who have done outstanding work. I mean, there is a cart of boxes sitting there now that they put together in the last few days. And then I've watched them put thousands and thousands of envelopes together. So the extra effort for this census. And I hope everybody's listening, anybody in the audience. If you haven't, or you know folks who haven't, or talk to people, if they haven't filled out the census, please, it's very important for a lot of programs in our community. So again, Ms. McGinnis, thank you very much. Alderwoman Lee.
I just wanted to welcome our new Nets Officer for the Goose Creek area, the Goose Creek neighborhood, Officer Carver. I met with Officer Carver and Sergeant Harris right before this meeting, and the Goose Creek area will be well-served. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Dorman. Alderman Dorman.
Can you hear me, Mike?
I can now. We're passionately waiting for your comments.
Sorry. I was saying, after a long pause in fifth ward meetings, we will have our June meeting on June 16th at 6:30. Due to COVID, I still really wanted the meeting to be in person. So we will be meeting in the council chambers, so it can be in person and socially distant. But that also allows us the opportunity to stream the meeting online as well. So anyone that does not feel comfortable coming down to City Hall, you will have the option to stream that meeting online as well. And the planned discussion items right now will be surrounding traffic. And we have both our city engineer and our traffic engineer coming to present to us. So talking about some of the recent speed issues around Vanveer and Main Street and how traffic control devices can help that and break some of the rumors of areas where traffic control devices actually might hinder your speed efforts and not help like we sometimes think it will. So it should be very fascinating. And well, since it's an online option, everyone can attend, just not fifth ward residents. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Seeing no one else? I'm pausing just to make sure. Very good. Okay, we'll move to the next item on our agenda. We have six items on the discussion agenda. So I'll read each one, and then we'll discuss or public if you have comment. Again, when they say public with comment on these agenda items, if you have something to say, please come to the podium. Again, you can see the microphone is above you. It picks it up. And you'll have five minutes. Please state your name and ward or address. Thank you. So the first item is a third consideration for an ordinance for case ORD 20-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to amend several sections of Title 17 of the municipal code entitled zoning. I know we've had a lot of discussion, but, and is there any public with comment? Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion from alderwoman or aldermen? I'm pausing just to give our folks above here, because usually the electronics is slightly delayed. Hearing and seeing none. Brian, please call the roll. Dunn?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
And Ambrose?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. Ordinance is adopted. Number two on our discussion agenda is a preliminary resolution for the FY fiscal year 20, alley resurfacing program. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment? Very good. There's a motion. And a second. Any discussion from my colleagues? Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a lot of the discussion stemmed around what I brought up last week, which Corporate Counsel Mr. Warner informed us this week. It was a little clerical error. But I am happy to report to the rest of my council members that I spoke with and got some information from Brian Shat. And there is a very strong likelihood that the alley issue in sixth ward will never see counsel. There'll be a resolution that the neighbors will be able to come up with, which is a good thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jobchin. Any alderwoman, Lee?
Could somebody please provide a little information about this particular alley? Because it's different from the one we talked about before.
Ms. Gleason, are you up top, or Mr. Schott? Anyone, Public Works, up top?
Yeah, sorry, we were muted. We're double muted. We would actually have to do a little bit of research. This one's, so basically, how the alley program works from the state of Iowa is basically every alley ends up being on your agenda around five times. It's first for a public hearing and then a resolution for the business facts and things like that. So generally, each of these alleys has around four or five opportunities for a reading and for the public to speak about them. So generally, when we have a large share of the neighbors that agree, they don't come to council because they are all in agreement. So I could give you more specific information, but I honestly wasn't prepared for that today.
Fair enough. I think Ms. Spiegel has some update.
Yep, I've got it. So this one is the East West Alley between Pershing and Iowa, Columbia to Garfield. So it's that section of the fifth ward.
Another question? Is there support for this for a large proportion of the folks that would be affected? Because as we're talking...
Ms. Gleason, go ahead, then we'll get to Tom. Ms. Gleason, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah, it would never even have come up on your agenda without the support of more than 50%. And the residents are all giving several notices and the costs that will be, that will be basically assessed to them. So if any of them had been concerned, they would have come at the original public hearing and/or reached out to you prior to this stage.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lee, you're good. You're good. Okay. Mr. Warner, do you have any comments? You're good? Okay, we're good. That's good discussion. Okay, anyone else? Very good. Brian, please call the roll. Dorman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
And Dunn. Ten yeses, Your Honor. Thank you. Resolution is adopted. Number three, resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the North Division Street pavement reconstruction project, capital improvement project number 35042. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this item? There's a motion and a second. Any comments from my colleagues? Alderman Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank Public Works for meeting with Alderman Gripp, Alderwoman McGinnis, and myself to go over the concerns and challenges of this project. We realize that this is a major project and communication is going to be key. So I just want to let folks know that we are having a public meeting Monday at 5:30 here in council chambers. You can come personally, or you can, we're going to do it virtually, which that information will be on the city's website. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Anyone else? Hearing, seeing none. Okay, Brian, please call the roll. McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
And Dorman?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. Resolution is adopted. Number four, is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents to convey the vacated portion of the original Division Street right-of-way to the owner of adjacent partials Whiskey 0303-13 Bravo and Whiskey 0303-22 Bravo. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Motion and a second. Any comments from my colleagues? Hearing and seeing none? Pausing. Brian, please call the roll. Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
And McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Very good. Resolution is adopted. Number five is a motion to approve the appeal to overturn the decision of the Design Review Board to deny approval of a combination fence/wall design adjacent to 2108 East 11th Street. John Weiser is the applicant. Is there any public with comment? Noting that a yes vote for my colleagues overturns the Design Board review decision, a no vote will uphold the decision of the Design Review Board. Public with comment? Public with comment? Mr. Weiser. Again, any public, name, address, or ward, please. Thank you, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, this is... My name's John Weiser, 1125 Jersey Road. This is simply about the design of the wall around the Beer Garden itself. You can see how we have the bricks in a stepped-up fashion. We designed this with, you know, the idea to make it as beautiful as possible, as functional as possible. This will actually block a little bit of the wind in the colder months. It'll still provide the interaction between the garden and the street and the sidewalk for people. I don't think we should be here at this point. I think it's a... You know, I think it was a mistake to Design Review Board not to approve this design. If you guys have any questions on exactly... I have the plans, exactly what we're talking about. I have the plans here. You can take the closer look at it. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Weiser, if they do, we'll probably just sit right there. They'll call you back up.
All right.
Thank you. Is there any other... Hold on. Is there any other public with comment? Very good. Now, I'll accept a motion and a second. Any comments from my colleagues? Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Weiser and a couple fellow council members. I think this is, you know, a great idea. I think this is something that's going to really accentuate the Village of East Davenport, especially when we start to consider the tourism that would be coming to our area through the Viking Cruise Lines, the American Cruise Lines. There, from what I gather, there really is no design precedent for why the decision was made. Again, this is a great-looking structure that's going to enhance this area. I would be supportive of it and vote yes for this evening, and I ask all my fellow council members to vote the same.
Thank you. Alderwoman Lee.
This is an interesting situation. The Design Review Board is made up of professionals that are good at this type of work. I'm surprised to see this appeal coming before the council. And I understand that it was a short discussion at the Design Review Board meeting. Perhaps too short. It could have been longer in order to possibly work this out at the Review Board meeting itself. And that has me concerned, because I'm a bit loath to overturn the Design Review Board when they approved the entire Beer Garden, and it was this simple type of decision related to the wall itself, the design of the wall. So I just wanted to express my concern of the lack of discussion that apparently occurred at the meeting, and that therefore brings this to us.
You're good. Thank you. Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I share those concerns with Alderwoman Lee. Typically, I'm going to support the decisions that the DRB makes, because I respect the work that they do. I respect their expertise, and quite frankly, we have them for a reason, and the people who volunteer for that board put in a lot of time and effort. And typically, they are able to come to resolution with the developers to meet the design guidelines. Now, I understand that in this, the virtual meeting world that we're going through right now, sometimes communication isn't quite what it usually is. So I can understand that. After reviewing the design, I think that this is an inconsequential design feature. I wish it would have been addressed and figured out with the DRB, but in this case, I don't think it's enough that I would oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, pausing. Anyone else?
I have comments, Mayor.
Yeah, please, ma'am, go ahead. Alderman Dorman.
And just like what Alderman Grip just said, is that definitely in these challenging times, video conferences and non-person meetings do add challenges, but me having my comments right now is more challenging than if I was in person. So I understand where sometimes some other challenges arise, where these conversations aren't able to work themselves out. But I do think the design has practicality behind it that is needed and can aid to the business and help them be able to use the patio for more than just the few summer months that we have. And at the same time, I also, looking at the design, I don't see that it is anything that really is all that much of an eyesore would hinder from the area. And so, that being said, I also am in support of this, where I think the design is practical enough to have a second meaning, and is also still elegant enough that it fits within the East Village. So I am in support of approving the design. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Alderman Condon.
I'd just like to add that with design review, sometimes compliance to the letter of the law doesn't always directly relate to quality of materials or the durability of materials. And Mr. Weiser's track record of investment in the Quad, well, in the Quad Cities, but specifically the Village, he's, in my, to my eye, never spared any expense when it came to quality and things that were going to have a lasting impact on the value of the region. So I'm supportive of his design decision here.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Anyone else? I'm pausing. Hearing and seeing no one. Hearing and seeing no one else. Brian, please call the roll. Grip.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dorman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
No.
And Lee.
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor. Thank you. The motion passes. Next item, number six, is a motion determining property values for the FY 20 alley resurfacing program. Is there any public with comment? Will Alderman remove? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from any of my colleagues? Will Alderman remove? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from any of my colleagues? Hearing and seeing no one. Brian, please call the roll. Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Ambrose.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Dorman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
And Grip.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is there a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda? Motion and a second. Brian, roll call. Peacock.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
Ambrose. Dunn.
Yes.
Dorman.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Grip.
Yes.
And Condon.
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Consent agenda is passed. Next item, is there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? Hearing and seeing none. Next item, is there any public with business? So as we've been doing during COVID, as people have had the ability, I've allowed, if you send it to me, emails or comments, I will read them into the record. I have two tonight, so I'll read those, and then anybody here that would like to step up the podium would be happy to listen to you and hear what you got to say. So the first one is from Gina Hale, email to me. Thanks for the information. This is my comment, which I believe falls under public with business. So the way I do these, I just read them as they're sent. Council members who read the transcript of the Civil Rights Commission meeting, "The discriminatory comments made by Commissioner Pecora and others by the chair are evidence that they are unfit to serve. The proceedings were appalling. People in all protected classes should be deeply concerned. There are two reasons people are appointed to the civil rights positions. One is to strengthen and enforce civil rights laws. The other is to help white friends evade civil rights laws. This meeting made it quite clear why these new commissioners were appointed. I felt sullied just listening to the dark underbelly of Davenport politics exposed then." Again, Gina Hale. The other one I have is from Carrie Dugan, and I apologize if I say the name slightly off. Hello, and this is to me again. So, public input for tonight. Please read the email during public input. Alderman Mayor Mattson, I have five things to ask of you this evening. We need you to disclose publicly our police department's use of force policy, and these are numbered. Number two, to implement an immediate ban on racial profiling. Number three, to implement an immediate ban on stranglehold and chokeholds. Number four, to fully fund the Davenport Civil Rights Commission. Number five, and end policing in our schools. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. Now, any public comment on any item other than what was on the agenda? Please step to the podium. Again, as a reminder, please give your name, address, or ward. You'll have five minutes, and we appreciate your comments.
My name's Lourdes Rodriguez. I'm here with Quad Cities DSA. I've been here before. I don't live in Davenport, but I'm part of the community. Regarding the Civil Rights Commission, yesterday's meeting should embarrass everybody here on the board, you know, the people responsible for seating several of these members. I'd like to call for the immediate termination of Richard Pecora in particular. He was especially offensive during the meeting, committing microaggressions during the meeting, along with his previous comments about the LGBTQ community, saying that he's never heard of somebody being discriminated against for being LGBTQ. That person has no right on the Civil Rights Commission, in my humble opinion. Seeing somebody like that continually come to these meetings with a total, you know, lax attitude, just does not care to be there, will just, you know, he was on a Zoom meeting. He couldn't mute his microphone. He said he didn't care about the subtitles. What about the deaf community that this directly affects? This person is an absolute embarrassment to the Civil Rights Commission. I really strongly consider that he should be replaced or taken off of the board. In addition to that, the Chair of the Board, Janel Swanberg, when I hear the word Chair, I've been the Chair of the Quad Cities DSA, I know that sets a bar for the entire organization. When she doesn't want to do her work, when she wants to pass her work on to Latrice Lacy, the Director, that is a big red flag for me as a member of the community, that this person probably doesn't care either. She called one of her fellow council people who is black eloquent while speaking. That is so inappropriate. It's a microaggression. And if they don't know that, they shouldn't be on the Civil Rights Commission, point blank. Also, I'd like to address the policing situation in this town. I've seen the facts from the ACLU. I've seen how people are treated, black versus white, in regards to cannabis specifically. Decriminalize Davenport is working on that currently. I've seen people, I've heard the stories. People come to me, because I go to the Civil Rights Commission. People tell me their stories. Hearing how people are treated by the police here in Davenport tells me there is a larger problem than we want to acknowledge. When I hear that they, after their implicit bias training with Director Lacy, were complaining that they felt discriminated against, that they didn't want to hear the information. If you don't want to hear the information, don't come up here and give lip service to your community. Don't come up here and say, oh, you know, I'm doing everything I can with this good faith attitude. Like, that's not what is actually being reflected in the actions. When I see the actions, the proof is in the pudding. Please stop just giving us lip service as, you know, minority community. You have to do better. You just have to do better. Stop racial profiling. I say defund the police. $28 million in that budget versus the $580,000 for the Civil Rights Commission. Listening to the amount of cases the Civil Rights Commission has to hear, they can only take three cases to court. Three. And there's a backlog of complaints. What is being done about this? Why do we have so much money for the police department that is even outsourcing their own work? What are they doing with that money? I'm really concerned about that as a community member, and I would really like to see some accountability. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else? Ma'am, please. Again, name, number, and ward. Five minutes. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Yes, my name's Jenny Rafferty, and I live on Harrison Street in the Hilltop District. I'm here, my son and grandson both called me when they, we all watched George Floyd be murdered. And they requested that I speak up. My son reminded me of a time when he and I and his father were on the steps of the Metropolitan Art Museum in New York City. And we were, my husband was stopped by a police officer with cuffs out, asking what business he had. And my son was eight years old at the time. And for those of you who know me, I spoke up immediately and explained to him what business we had. We were a family going into the Metropolitan Museum, and it ended there. My grandson, who is now a W. Sheriff in Maricopa County, requested that I come forward because he is aware of what happened. It'll be two years ago August 1st, six days before my 67th birthday. I was in this room where we were protesting very peacefully and quietly back there, protesting the attempted overtaking of the Civil Rights Commission by the city government disstat. And Corey Spiegel, pardon me, Corey Spiegel pointed to the crowd. It was quiet.
So Mr. Rafferty, direct your comments to me here.
Yes, I'm sorry. Just wanted to share where she is. She pointed to the crowd and said, remove those people. And not a word was spoken by those people, myself included. And Officer William Martin grabbed me by the forearm, shoving me backwards into that wall, onto the floor. And when I rolled over and looked up, the look in Officer Martin's eyes scared the life out of me. And even in that moment, as well as I was walking back up the Hill home, I thought to myself, my God, what does that young officer do when he's alone in that police guard with that gun on his hip, and he's dealing with young people? I was so frightened, and I've been haunted by it ever since. And George Floyd brought that up to me again. So, and it was even more alarming when I rolled over and looked in. The police chief, Sikorsky, who just gave that marvelous presentation, was standing right next to him, grinning at me. I had to put my arm up and said, now, now, young man, you'll help me up. And with that, he helped me up, and I walked back into the row. And then the chief walked back and forth. I was like, someone offered me a chair. Of course, I was 67 years old, and I don't feel old, but apparently some people think I'm elderly. And I sat down, and the chief proceeded to just walk back and forth in front of me in a very threatening manner. So I'm here because, well, first, I forgot to say, I congratulate the people of Davenport for voting for Mike Mattson. You give us hope in these very distressful times. So it's not all negative. But there is racism in Davenport there, I was asked. And I'm working on Sociological History of Davenport from 1968 to the present day. And it's here. It's here. As I was coming from a Cory Booker rally at the River Center, walking up on a Sunday night in the fall up Brady Street Hill, I walk everywhere. I had my Notre Dame hoodie on and blue jeans, and I'm walking up the hill. It was a very quiet evening, very, very quiet evening, very little traffic. Because I walk all the time, I'm very conscious, and I've lived in big cities, I'm very conscious of what's around me. As my brother once told me in Washington, DC, when I first went there in 1970, he said to me, walk like you're going somewhere. Head up, walk like you're going somewhere. And I've done that ever since. So I'm coming up Brady Street Hill on a Sunday night, and I hear a car. It's coming towards me, and there's no other traffic. And it pulls over to the curb, and I keep walking, slowed down a bit, but kept walking. And I hear the car stop, and I hear a door open, and I hear, put your hands up, boy. So I raised my hands, and I slowly turned around, and I faced the officer. I took down my hood, and his mouth dropped open. And I said to him, I know what you're doing, and I'll be watching you. We have to do something. The police chief of Minneapolis said today that we need to use real-time data and records of behavior. And I would suggest that the chief of the police of Davenport, Iowa, look into William Martin, because I personally don't trust him out on the streets dealing with our young people. If he's going to treat a 67-year-old woman like he treated me two years ago, August 1st... If he's going to treat a 67-year-old woman like he treated me two years ago, August 1st.
Mr. Rafferty.
In a crowd.
Please finish.
Yes. So, well, that's all I have to say. So let's look into William Martin. And, because I'll be looking into William Martin. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Marin City Council. I'm Brian Winger and with Decriminalize Davenport. So about a year ago, I came to the then Marin City Council with my findings of an investigation that I did on my own on the Davenport Police Department. What I found was shocking and I, I'm, you know, if you go back in the archives, you can see it. And what I came to you with was that I found that for the arrests of anything related to cannabis in the city of Davenport, the Davenport Police arrested black people six times more than white people, even though they smoked cannabis at the exact same rate. So six times, remember that number? So then about a month or about, yeah, about two months ago, ACLU of Iowa came out with a report. And they backed up my findings. And not only did they back up my findings, but now in the city of Davenport, you're 8.2 times likely to be arrested for cannabis if you're a black person rather than a white person, even though they smoke at the exact same rate, remember that? Also, when I'm giving you these numbers, you have to remember that black people make up a small portion of this community. So they're being arrested at 8.2 times more than white people for the same thing and they make up 12% of the population. Are you serious? I came to you last year telling you it was six times. Y'all did nothing, nothing. Y'all just sat there, just looked at me, just like you're looking at me right now. Terrible, 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 terrible. So, you know, and that's another thing, ACLU, ACLU of Iowa came out with this report two months ago. Do none of you subscribe to the ACLU of Iowa? You're all aldermen in the state of Iowa and none of you subscribe to this place? None of it at all, none of you at all? You don't get the numbers from there. Amazing, amazing. So you all slept on that and, you know, it, it's went up, it's went up. Like I said, it's 8.2 in Davenport. In, in Bedendorf, if you want to know, you guys ain't the worst. In Bedendorf, it's 9.9 times, so is 10 times. And in Scott County as a whole, the whole entirety of Scott County, 12.7 times. If you're a black person, you will get arrested for cannabis over a white person, even though they smoke at the exact same rate. Now, what I wonder is, Mr. Mayor, your budget for policing in the city of Davenport, as Lourdes said, is 2 million more than anything else combined. It's 28 million, 26 million for everything else. So you spoke public safety in your, in your campaign as being your number one concern. So I see and everybody else sees that that is overpolicing. That's what that looks like to you. We don't like that. Also, in your campaign, you had a flyer I saw and it says you have a value system. And it said that that value system supports education, workers, families, children, seniors, and economic prosperity. So here it is, 28 million for the, for the Davenport Police Department. And everything else that is in your value system, Mr. Mayor, is at 26 million. What is it that you value in the city of Davenport, Mr. Mayor? You don't value black people. That's very, very, very evident by the way you let your police police them. Now, you said earlier you had outside eyes looking at you, Mr. Chief?
Mr. Winger.
Are those outside eyes sleeping?
Brian.
I think they are.
Direct the comments to me.
These outside eyes are watching you and I can guarantee you that. I have one more thing. Abolish AIDS. I want the city to look into abolish AIDS. Abolish AIDS can't wait. Number one, defund police. Number two, demilitarize communities. Number three, remove police from schools. Number four, free people from jails and prisons. Number five, repeal laws that criminalize survival. Invest, number six, invest in community self-governance. Number seven, provide safe housing for everyone. Number eight, invest in care, not cops. Have a good day.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Winger. Anyone else? Ma'am, please. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
It's Kim from KCC Harm Reduction. And I just wanted to piggyback on what Laura and Mr. Winger talked about because that budget is bloated. I'm a registered nurse, I'm an old registered nurse, but I'm going to tell you a couple of things I think we need to do with law enforcement. When I practiced, when my nurse aides worked with me, we had a registry. If you were a bad actor as a nurse in any healthcare setting, you didn't get a pass. Nurse aides didn't get a pass. They got put on a registry. If they were abusive to patients, if they didn't perform their duties and risked lives, they were put on a registry. When they went down the road to get another job, you called the registry, checked out their license number and found out what they did, they didn't get to take that bad acting down the road. I believe that that is an intervention that we may want to consider in this country. A state registry would work, it'd be a pain in the neck. It would be nice to have a national registry. But a lot of the budgets and the laws and different things that are associated with law enforcement are tied up in our state legislature, right? I couldn't even get Narcan in the Scott County Jail because of a code up in the Iowa State Legislature. It's ridiculous. I have been trying for four or five years to get Narcan in the county jails for all the inmates so that when they leave, they got it in their hands and not trying to run around and find it when they get out. Everything, when it comes to these budgets and how our police do business, a lot of it's tied up in the state legislature. But I can tell you this, we have a lot of people unhoused right here. We have neighborhoods, Sithcoats, that do not get what they need. Black and brown communities, yeah, that's who I'm talking about. We've done gentrification, we've, we've removed people from homes and we have not provided them any, any alternatives. I say let's start looking at the budget and seeing what we can redirect into our community, especially for the people in this community that are most affected, which is our black and brown friends, brothers and sisters. And stop acting like we don't have a problem in the Quad Cities. I fully intend to go to Rock Island and tell them the same thing. We can do better and we are not. And we're just talking way over the issue. We're not, we're going around it, under it, over it, we're not moving through it. We can do a lot of housing with some of that budget money. We could offer people that have opioid substance use disorders. We could offer them some better treatment options. We could get them MAT in the jails. We don't do that, we don't do anything. Except that circular in and out of jail. And Brian's right about cannabis arrests. And there was just a new law passed up in this, up in the legislature today. And they're going to pass it. And they're talking about making seeds and stems in cars in Iowa a felony. And you need to understand this, all falls back on our black and brown community. You heard Laura and Brian tell you how much there is in the budget and you heard the stats. We can do better. And I know what's going on out in the streets because I'm in the streets. I put on my little backpack with all my Narcan and all my supplies and I go out there. I know what's going on. People are not housed. People have not, they have no fruits, vegetables, nothing to eat. And we're sitting here talking about somebody's brick wall on the Village East Davenport. We have big problems in the Quad Cities. We have racist, racism is rampant. And we're not doing anything about it except talking about it, let's do something about it. I'll be glad to help. I'll sit down with anyone here. I know how to put systems in place and I know how to make systems work. I did it for 30 years.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Sir, please.
Hi guys, Jonathan Vance, 7th Ward.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you too. It's been a few years since high school. So firstly, I'd like to say that I firmly support everything that the public said here and I agree with all of it. And I won't take a full five minutes because every, most everything I wanted to talk about was addressed in that second email you read, I believe, from Ms. Dugan. I firmly support all five points in that. And I'd like to add one more to that list. The Chief talked about community transparency and building community trust and all that. And one of the biggest issues we're seeing that has led us to this point is lack of transparency with law enforcement nationwide for decades. We have dealt with police investigating, police and telling us police didn't do anything wrong. And so I think the quickest way right now that we can affect meaningful change moving forward immediately is to convene community review boards that get to partake in those investigations. And that way we can trust the word coming out saying that police didn't do something wrong or did do something wrong. And we don't have to take the police's word that they didn't commit a crime. That's all I've got for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Cassandra.
We started a line here. Hi, my name is Cassandra Irwin. I am in the 6th Ward. I was motivated to speak by the lady who was knocked down. I have been filled with anxiety for the past week. It's, it has been an incredibly fraught week. I've, I've spoken to Pat, who was a friend for a couple of years. You know, my, my husband and I stayed up until 3 o'clock in the morning last Monday, Sunday night, was it? Listening to the police scanners because even though I participated in the past protests, I believe everyone that I possibly could, you know, I am still concerned with what goes on in the city. And that meant staying up and listening to the scanners. And whether it was for concern for our public servants and also out of concern for the need for transparency, we were up and we were listening. And the following days were terrible. But to follow up on the last gentleman's statement, transparency doesn't just start with what happens after an event. As a few of you know, I had previously served on the Civil Service Commission and the majority of you approved my position. I served for a two-year term and it was fraught with tension because I asked too many questions. I asked for every list, I wanted to see the racial makeup of every single list. Because I was concerned with who was getting approved, who was on our certification lists. Because I didn't think that it was representative of our city. And after probably six months, they stopped providing the lists to me. The ethnic makeup of the lists. And after that for a while, they fought. They fought and I don't know if it was the staff. This was a previous, partially previous administration, I believe. Corey Spiegel was still, was previously there. But after, after fighting to get the lists, the makeup of the lists, I was not only stonewalled, I was fought for transparency. These are things that are required by law. And when the lists, the certification lists of our officers and the people who are protected by civil service laws are 90, 95, 98% white, we don't have a representative force. And that's where the problem starts. And when I ask, why are these lists always this makeup? And I am the only one and I am stonewalled every step of the way? This is the problem. This is why we have racial disparities in arrests in policing, in complaints that come up to civil service. Transparency begins before arrests. It begins before policing. If we don't have a representative force, we will never get to that point. I spent two years fighting for that. And it was eventually threatened, was eventually brought in multiple times, threatened, I think I talked to you about it, Mike. Threatened with either removal, public embarrassment, or lawsuits. And I fought and fought and fought and was eventually just told that I wasn't going to be, my term wasn't going to continue. Because I wanted representative forces. This is a problem. You know, and I, I have struggled with this, this issue. But the lady who spoke about the, a couple of years ago, the issue, which I think had luckily just left that meeting because I have a kid who hates these things. You know, like I said, I had participated in these every March. And I think I'd seen you at an event, I'd seen you at an event. Luckily, thankfully, two of our, our council representatives have gone to these. Disappointed I haven't seen more, honestly. Because I was at an event, a former Davenport Police Department officer threatened to put my address online so that my family could be attacked.
Finish up, Cassandra.
This is the, this is the department that we're used to. I never thought that something like this would happen to my family. I'm white, I'm middle class, I married a former law enforcement officer. I never thought that this would happen. And when I talked to him, nobody cared.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Anyone else? Hearing, okay. Name and order or address.
My name is Evan Shank and I live in the 8th Ward. Before we leave for tonight, I seem to look like I was the last person who wanted to talk. I just wanted to call the council's attention to something that the Chief of Police said towards the end of his presentation, which is that a lot of the challenges he sees the Davenport Police facing in the community and their interactions with the community and the use of force is lack of resources for those communities, problems that those communities that they're interacting with have and that wants the department to continue partnering and expand partnering with other agencies in the city to address those problems, which would hopefully mean that the police would have to go out on fewer calls, right? Also said they're gathering statistical information about use of force, about where they're going on calls. So if that's the case and if the resources in those communities are the cause of a lot of these problems, then we know based on that where they're going out on calls, where they're using force and on whom. So we know what communities the city can target with resources. And also in his own words, he's saying they need the police to be able to partner with social service agencies, right? Not sending more officers, but bringing in social workers and other people who can more directly address those problems. So the question there is, is it the most efficient use of resources to allocate it to the police, right? If the police themselves need to partner with other under-resourced agencies in the city to help those communities. So it would be good on a long-term perspective to think about where the city can devote resources, especially because in the near future, because of the economic changes under the pandemic, it's, you know, it's going to be a struggle in the state government, federal government and of course municipal governments to get resources to the community that we need. So we'll have to do that in the most efficient way possible. That's, just wanted to draw your attention to what he said about that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Nope, please, whatever order you'd like to go. Ma'am, oh, you're a news person. Athena.
Yeah, hi, I'm Athena Gilbreath. I live in the 1st Ward. Again, thank you so much for the proclamation. It's really encouraging that the city is willing to take a look. It's really encouraging, um, that the city is willing to take a look, um, at the life of African-Americans here. However, um, I do, um, I have pause when it comes to what the city is actually doing on behalf of our black community. Um, so many of my friends back here behind me have eloquently stated, um, what is going on, um, reality-wise in this community. And as a mother, as a resident of Davenport, I am extremely concerned. Um, I'm not here on behalf of any type of organization. I'm not here on behalf of any political motivation. I'm here because I am a mother of a black son. I have been working in anti-racist work for the last five years. I have been an activist, and I have been working very, very hard to make sure that Davenport is a safe place to live. However, that's just not happening. With the statistics that you previously heard, it's absolutely positively not happening. And I feel in my mom gut, which I'm sure many, many, many women have, I feel that what happened in Minnesota is going to happen here, it's going to happen at any moment. And my son, I will be damned if he is killed by a police officer. One in every 1,000 young black men in the United States of America can expect to be killed by a police officer. Those statistics are insane. And if we're not looking at those statistics realistically, if we're not looking at those statistics here in Davenport, then we are ignoring the problems that go on all around us. We're not special. The police here aren't special. Nobody here is special. We are not immune to racism. And I have seen more racism here than I have in some of the smaller towns in this state. We, you know, the Juneteenth proclamation is fantastic. The whole reason why I wanted to make sure that the city recognized Juneteenth, was so maybe somebody who didn't know what Juneteenth was would look at the calendar and say, what is that? Let me do a little bit of investigating on my own because education is key when it comes to racism. And I can tell you right now that there are not city leaders right here in Davenport who are educated about racism whatsoever, whatsoever. There is a Trump sign in the police department where they do their office work, and that is not okay. We all know what the president thinks about people who look like me, who look like Alderman Peacock, who look like my son, and that is not okay. So if they're for all the people, why in the heck is there a Trump sign in our Davenport Police Department? That needs to go. Even though slavery did end in 1865, you know we were not given real freedom. We spent the last 100 years, or the 100 years after, after Juneteenth, fighting underneath Jim Crow. And another 55 years, here we are today in 2020. And now we're fighting the police, we are ducking, we are trying to avoid the police at any cost so we don't die. This problem is not, again, unique to the United States. It will happen here if we don't pay attention to it. Race is the epitome of everything, and if you don't put it above all of your business, you're going to see tragedy here, and then we'll be the one on the news. And we'll be the ones who are telling CNN and MSNBC what we were doing wrong. And what we are, what we were doing wrong, what we are doing wrong is ignoring a huge, huge systemic problem. It's here in Davenport, and it's here to stay unless you decide not to allow it. I also want to mention that going to a protest and kneeling with protesters who are fighting against police brutality is nothing short of performative. Do not go to those protests if you do not mean it when we say black lives matter. We don't want you there. If you really believe that black lives matter, then start educating yourself. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
My name is Dennis Platt from the 6th Ward. And I just wanted to acknowledge everyone that's already spoken. There's so many good points have been made. And the gentleman that spoke about the citizen review board, I think, said some very important things, and I just want to reinforce what he said. Um, this is a mechanism to put transparency where you're simply not able to do it. You can't do it in every department, everywhere, all the time, for everybody. But you can involve citizens in that. And it's not an advisory board, it's a review board, keep that in mind. Um, I think you need to find a way to involve the public in your union negotiations with the police. There's no reason this has to be a secret. We need to see that. And I think we need to find a way to involve the public in reviewing your accreditation reports. And the, um, not only the deficiencies, but the corrections. And this is a conversation that the public needs to have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Sir, good to see you again.
Do I want to make first word? Uh, first of all, I'd like to say for the last few weeks, I've been praying and praying for our police officers that they stay safe in all this nonsense going on. So with that, I appreciate them, I appreciate the city council. Three weeks ago, we had one of our street friends pass away in the parking ramp across from the bus station. I don't know if y'all know about that. Um, he was homeless for several years, tried to get him help for a long time. He just was so far gone that he wanted to live on the streets and die, and that's what he did. My message to everybody lately that I've come across on street friends is you don't have to die in a parking ramp alone. We have plenty of resources for you. We're, city council, mayor here in Davenport, everyone working with me and other people trying to get places for them. Today, I was at lunchtime and I went and grabbed some sandwiches at McDonald's and took them down across there, and there was at least 30 homeless people, street friends, there looking for food. I didn't have enough, so I went to Little Caesar's and bought six pizzas and took them back down there. Everybody was appreciative, and that, but what broke my heart is there's two families there with children that are on the street. And y'all know this, and they hide, they hide in the church so their kids don't get taken away. But in the city of Davenport, anywhere in the Quad Cities, there is not a shelter, if you're a family, that's going to take you in. The only one I know of is a domestic violence shelter, and they keep it for two weeks. I know that if I was on the street in hard times, two weeks, I'm not going to get my stuff together, and where are we going to go? Right back onto the street. I'm asking, I'm, anybody to help figure out a way where we can get something for families. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Harry, okay, ma'am?
I'm Carrie Dugan, 5th Ward. I'm very brief because I really appreciate reading my email. I wasn't sure what the situation would be, whether or not I could get in. Um, I'm hearing a lot of pain here, you know, I'm hearing a lot of pain in our community. And I just want to bring just a little bit of attention back to a simple solution. When the Department of Education was here and our school board was asking them what to do about discipline problems, they said literacy is the answer. My daughter is one of the many, many kids who is now 18, product whole time of Davenport schools, who cannot read. They chose not to teach her to read, to ignore her learning disabilities, and ignore her rights, and not teach her to read. When kids can't read, they have limited career choices. They can sling weed, they can dance, they can be a prostitute, whatever. But all of those options are not great for our future or our city. So you guys do have a responsibility to control this school district. It is your responsibility. Please teach our kids to read, it will solve a lot of these problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Pausing. Okay, thank you, everyone, for your comments. Appreciate you coming here, we take them serious, we'll have discussions. Um, so, any more reports from Spiegel? Okay, so we're going to go into executive session now. So will an alderman move to go into executive session to evaluate the performance of individuals? Enclosed session as requested by those individuals pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.51I. Motion and a second to go into executive session. And just before I ask Brian to call the roll, just so everybody knows, we'll move from here to executive session, we will not come back here. We will adjourn from the executive session, we won't be coming back to council. Brian, please, and I'll ask my colleagues, please hurry up to executive session, not hang out down here. Brian? Dickman?
Yes.
Job Jin?
Yes.
Ambrose? Dunn?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Anne Peacock?
Yes.
Ten, yes, as your honor. Very good, go upstairs. I'm sorry, I apologize across the street to the PD room. And if you want to call, um, if you're up on the phone, please call in, give us a few minutes to get over there.
Mayor, are we, are we using the same phone number and code?
Alderman, Dorman, check your email, you'll have new instructions.
Okay, thank you.